Good evening and welcome to this candidate's forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. I'm your moderator David Maron and a member of the League of Women Voters. We have two city council candidates with us tonight and we are going to begin with a short welcome from our president of the League of Women Voters Ventura County, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening. I am happy to welcome you all on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold the right to vote precious since not all people were given that right in the original constitution. And for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about the candidates and the issues. From its beginning and continuing today, the League is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Each of us has a voice in our government, but only if we use our vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons of each ballot proposition before we cast our vote. This is your opportunity as voters to learn about the candidates and where they stand on the issues important to you. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope you have many of your questions answered by the candidates and be sure to make a plan to vote. Thank you.
I can't hear anything.
Thank you, Betsy. And before we begin, candidates, I'm going to just take a moment to share with our audience a district map. So I believe you both are running in District 4?
Yes.
Yes. So for the audience, this is a map of the city of Ojai as far as how the district is laid out. 4 is this great pattern down here towards the bottom. If you live in this district, you will be voting for one of these two candidates. If you do not live in this district, we still think you should watch and learn about the two candidates because one of them will be representing you on the city council, even if you do not live in that district. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with our program. We randomly drew numbers earlier. We're going to have opening statements. We'll begin with Susa Francina, if I'm saying that properly, and then Jerry. Thank you. So when you're ready, Susa, a minute and a half.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting us through these presentations every election. I really appreciate it. Most of you probably watching this know me, but for those who don't know me, I've lived in Ojai for over 60 years. I came to Ojai when I was seven years old. I've watched all the battles that have been fought over the decades, including all the issues that came before the citizens that preserved the Ojai, which is the reason we have such a beautiful, small town. And when we came to Ojai, we thought it was paradise. And I still see that potential if we're vigilant and protect what we have. I bring a lifetime of experience to the city council, and by that I mean that I have probably worn, I've worn about so many hats. And I understand our community. I understand the needs of families, the young people growing up here. I raised my own children here. My two grandchildren are growing up here. I worked for many, many years with seniors. And I understand, I feel that I understand the needs of the community. And I want, I am here tonight to continue to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Jerry Becker.
Thank you. I'm a 26-year resident of Ojai, and I've raised my three kids here. They all went to Ojai schools. They're now in college and graduate school, and they're entrepreneurs, and they're working here in our county and in our city. They're all entrepreneurs like I am. I'm a local small business owner here. I'm a real estate broker currently. Some of you may know me from being an attorney for over 25 years. I'm retired now, but I practiced in the areas of family law, business law, estate planning, and I advocated for adults with developmental disabilities. I also worked in the arena of education law. So I'm well-versed in administrative and civil law. And currently, as a real estate broker, I am a board of director for the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. I am also a member and a founding member of the Smart Coast California, a nonprofit that works to codify and help our local jurisdictions codify their sea level rise plans across California. I love working in our community. I love living in our community, and I help people transition to living here in our community and finding their home and their nest. I will be transparent, and I will serve your voice of the community in this seat without using my own personal interests as my guide. I intend to listen and do the right thing for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jerry, we'll start with you on the first question. And the question is about the housing that's needed throughout the state. In fact, it says the state of California is 500,000 housing units short of current demand. So how can Ojai make up its fair share? If you were elected, what will be your policies regarding housing? What type of housing do you prefer?
Well, this is something that is very near and dear to my heart. I'm affordable housing advocate, and I find that Ojai's, this is terrible. I see this every day. I see this with people struggling to find a place to live, a place to rent. We have the number one, in this county, we're the number one city for percentage of renters within our city. We're the number two for the price of houses, and we're the number one for rent rate. So affordable housing is a huge issue in Ojai. I haven't seen any developments come forth recently or in the recent years that are large multifamily units. What's happening and what I see is that our city council and our planning commission is very dissuasive to people that bring their projects forward. And I think we need to change our environment for people that are trying to build affordable housing within our community and even just increase our housing stock. It's pretty brutal for developers. They leave within the first few minutes and they cut their losses. We need to loosen up our codes a little bit, maybe offer the ability to have different types of building processes, make it less expensive, make it shorter, and green and affordable by design. So these projects aren't shut out. I'd like to be a voice of promoting affordable housing and housing stock in our city.
Susa, same question to you. The city of Ojai certainly needs to make up more housing. What type of policies will you put in place? What type of housing do you prefer?
Well, I come, I'm a low-income renter, so I have a little different perspective on the issue. I'm well aware of the problems, and the city is working to create some affordable developments. I've been an advocate for green, affordable housing, energy-efficient housing, water-efficient, fire, and earthquake housing for the past 25 years. And one of the reasons I ran for city council four years ago was to preserve our housing stock by banning short-term rentals. The ban on SDR aims to prevent investors from turning our very limited housing stock into hotels. The city is encouraging a wide range of accessory dwelling units, including garage conversions, small houses, and shared housing, either turning larger homes into two or three more independent units, or encouraging homeowners to create conditions and contracts that can result in compatible home sharing. And I want to say something very clear to my challenger. We can reduce our footprints without building three-story apartments. I heard you say that on a podcast today, and that alarmed me. We can reduce our footprint so many ways, including stop building four-car garages and things like that. And I want to say this as nice as I can. I know-
I have to stop you there, Susa. You're going to have to wait for another question. We are going to start the next question with you, though, Susa. As far as talking about some of the undocumented community members that might be in your city, what are your positions about immigration on documented community members? And are you committed to their protection? Sorry, we'll just unmute you, Susa, and then let you get started.
Click and are you-
There we go. Please begin.
I did click it. Okay, so that's another issue I'm very passionate about. We're immigrants. My family is, we're immigrants, legal immigrants. But this, you know, the situation with undocumented immigrants, I feel that they need to be protected. I mean, I'm appalled at what's happening with turning them over to ICE and all the horrible things that are happening with children in these detention centers. But as far as locally, there needs to be a pathway to help these people become legal citizens. Definitely not after all they've been through. And with my understanding of the reasons why they leave their country and why they go through so much hardship to arrive here, I think the least we can do is make it possible for them to stay. And I have helped in that respect by paying for immigrant, helping someone to pay for an immigration lawyer, that somebody in the community that was going to be deported. And I was successful in that. And that's, I think we should make it much easier for churches and families to adopt these families that need our help. And we need them to do the wonderful work that they do in our community. I want to support them in every way possible. I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
I have to stop you there. Jerry, same question to you. Tell us about your thoughts and commitment to those who are undocumented within Ojai.
Sure. I'm just going to comment rather quickly in regard to what Susa just said, and that is in regard to short-term rentals. And partly that what she was administrating there is brought on by our state. We have new rules from coming down from the state that are going to allow us to do that sort of housing and the ADUs. They had to force local jurisdictions to actually loosen up the rules to allow our citizens to build ADUs freely on their properties. In regard to immigration, I just, in fact, I just wrote a letter for a good friend and someone that I actually employ at my house sometimes to do work. We're hoping that he can get his general contractor's license, and he needs to get his, he needs to become legalized. And I've helped so many people in this process over the course of my years here in California and as an attorney. And it's a mess. Our system is a mess. It is unfair to people that are here working, being, contributing to our economy, contributing to our culture, contributing to our families. And I find it to be, just as my opponent does, I find it appalling. It's very sad. And I do think we need to straighten that out. I think we can support them here locally through different programs. I'm not, I'm not one to like say that that's really our purview as a city council person.
I have to stop you there, Jerry.
Sorry.
Okay. But we're going to begin the next question for you, and let's just jump into this topic because we have several questions about short-term rentals. So do you, and Jerry, you're up first. Do you agree with a existing short-term rental ban in place? And what do you think the city's view or policy should be regarding vacation rental, short-term rentals?
Well, again, we're lacking housing supply here. We have our city council and our planning commission have dissuaded people from building housing units. We are behind on our reign of numbers, and we are not inviting this type of building going on in our city. I do think that one of the ways, and it's very known in the community of affordable housing proponents, one of the better ways to do affordable housing for people and raise our housing stock is to actually go three stories. And I'm not saying that we need to put three stories in our downtown corridor, but there are places in our city that we could actually do that. So I do, I do think that short-term rental is intertwined with our lack of housing. I do support, I believe in property rights, but not when we have a housing crisis like we do. So right now, if we allow those long-term rentals that are on, on the market to be converted back to short-term rentals, it'll just take all those houses out of our availability for people and families that need affordable housing in town. So I do think we need to allow homestays. We have to balance this out. We need to allow homestays so people can at least make money from like probably their most important asset that they own. I think it's only fair, and especially in this hard times of the economy and COVID and people losing their jobs.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Susa, same question to you. What are your positions about the existing short-term rental ban that's in place? What are your policies you think the city council should put into place?
I think our current policy is exactly what we need in our small town. And the fact is that people can still supplement their income by renting out rooms and their guest houses for 30 days or more. And one of the ways that we can increase our housing stock is to absolutely take advantage of the ADU mandate from the state by dividing some, we have a large older population that's living alone in huge houses. Their children are grown. And if they, it would be a mutual advantage if they had someone living in their house. As I said before, it could be your home share, or it could be you can legally divide up a large home, sometimes with four or five bathrooms, into three independent units. And I want to say something else to my opponent. You know, you criticize the planning commission and the city council for taking a strong stand against the type of development that could destroy our small town. And that's very easy for you to say due to where you live in the city. You will never be affected by three-story buildings in Pociman Hill. It's very easy to be, to be in, to not be a NIMBY where you, in the area where you live, but someone, somewhere will be affected. The, our beautiful mountain views, that person will not be able to see-
I have to stop you there, Susa. Just for the audience, we did not offer the candidates the option for rebuttals, but candidates are certainly able to use their time to rebut when they deal with the next question. So in case anyone's wondering why we're not allowing rebuttals, that's the reason. So let's move on. Jerry, the next question is to you. And let's talk about, a little bit more about your volunteer, your work in the city, some of the things you've done. Tell our viewers a little bit about your history in the community, any experience you have on council or governing boards, things like that.
Sure, sure. So I've been here, as I said, 26 years. It was actually 30, but we moved out for a couple of years, but we kept our ties here. I grew up in Ventura County. I came to Ojai as a child many times to swim in the creek. That was one of the favorite things that we got to do up here. I have, like I said, raised three children here in town. I've served as a tutor for School on Wheels, in which I tutored young women or young girls, we'll say, they were in high school, and they were at a group home in our valley. And I, and I love that. I love providing education and encouragement. I've been an ASO referee, an ASO coach, a high school soccer coach, an assistant coach. I am part of the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. I take Taekwondo. Many people in the past, I love Mr. Sermonaro. I'm very involved here. I am a business owner, and I've been a small business owner involved in our city for years. I know the struggle. I see that. I find it very, very difficult currently for business owners, and they know that. I'm a member of our chamber. I support them. I support my neighbors. There's many other activities. I'm a board of director. And as I said previously, I'm very involved in housing rights, and I have been up in Sacramento lobbying on behalf of private property rights and-
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
I'll stop you there. Susa, same question to you. Take a moment to share with us a little bit more about your experience in the community, other committees or commissions you've served on?
Yes. Well, as a city council member, I'm the liaison to every single commission in the course of a year, including the Art Commission, the Planning Commission, the Building Appeals Board, the Historical Preservation Commission, and the Arts Commission. Like all, you know, when my children were growing up, like all parents, I volunteered in the schools. But before, many years before I was even on the city council, I was a strong advocate for sustainable cities. I worked with the Green Coalition on many of their ordinances. I volunteered time for the chain store ordinance, and probably most well-known for my bicycle advocacy. I am a, was a founding member of the Ojai Bicycle Coalition. I've probably volunteered hundreds of hours in the school with various programs, to teach children the rules of the road. I lead bike trains to school every year, sometimes twice a year. We're all year long, we're, for a week with a police escort, we ride with up to 40 kids, sometimes even 200 kids with the older kids. We take them to school to show that we could be the kind of community where children could ride safely. I volunteer for Earth Day, Ojai Day, hundreds of hours. I've spent, I advocate for regenerative agriculture. I've worked with pesticide-free Ojai. I'm a longtime animal advocate for wildlife-
I have to stop you there, Susa. Susa, going to have to, your time's up. But I'm going to begin the next question with you. There were a lot of questions on this topic, and it seems like there's some real difference between the two of you on short-term rentals. So we have another one regarding short-term rentals, and that is, what are your positions about controlling the activities of those who may be using short-term rentals? Those are impacts maybe on tourism, public safety, those types of things. So share with us more about your thoughts on short-term rentals.
Okay, first of all, people, you know, old timers who've always rented a room periodically, nobody notices. It's like a relative coming to their house, and it probably is a relative or a friend from Europe where they pay a stipend. We're not worried about that. Are you asking, that was a long question. Are you asking, how should the handle, the city handle when people have parties and weddings and things that disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhood? Was that the question?
So I'm only able to read the question as submitted, but I would think that is a fair point to question what activities, short-term rentals, the impacts on the community, the neighborhoods. I think that would be a fair response.
Well, in fairness, I think the first warning should be what I would characterize as a soft warning. And from then on, you, we need the fees to pay for the code enforcement officer. I don't know, you know, there are penalties. I don't know what more we can do beyond the penalties. I don't think that we've sent anyone to prison over this, and I wouldn't want to see that happen. But I think that we, the code enforcement, if a neighbor complains, like most ordinances, it's complaint-driven. And if someone complains, obviously, there's a basis. There's a disturbance in the neighborhood, and it's the code enforcement's job to remove that disturbance by, and by explaining to the homeowner that they're participating in illegal activity.
Thank you. Jerry, same question to you. As far as short-term rentals, some of the effects or impacts that may happen with short-term rentals, do you have views on controlling those activities and any impacts on the neighborhoods?
Sure. So another one of the things I do in my work and in my job and my, as a broker and an advocate for housing rights, I'm the local government relations liaison for our board of directors. And in that capacity, I travel to all the cities within our county and our county seat. And we follow rules such as short-term rental laws and who's passing them, who's banning them, how they're dealing with them. And I've seen some very good systems that our local cities have, have been putting in place. Most of the issues revolve around nuisances. We have nuisance laws already on the books. We have public drinking laws on the books. So the fear is that people are going to abuse the right to live peacefully in our neighborhoods. Nobody wants to have the party house next door to them. So what cities have done that I've seen be very effective is that they have like almost like a three strikes and you're out. You lose your license. The upside of having short-term rentals is we could actually gain some revenue from this if we actually properly regulated it. So I really see that it is something that should be possibly brought back to life here in town. I mean, we are basically a tourist economy. We're a tourist town. We love promoting the beauty of our valley and sharing it with people who want to visit.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to stay with you, Jerry, for the next question. And this is a bit of a long one. So the Highway 33 lane reduction project poses a negative impact because of increased traffic flow through the neighborhood behind bonds, specifically that Valerio Avenue. So are you, what are your thoughts about the people's concern regarding this traffic? What is your position on it? Are you outreach-ing to people to learn about their concerns?
Yes, 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 and yes. I know this is a big hot topic issue. I think it's a beautiful thing that we have grant money of $2.8 million. I am very concerned to see what the demonstration is going to produce, and if the demonstration project and the demonstration and test runs are actually going to be accurate based on what we have going on right now with COVID. So the people that live next door to, like the Valerio Street area, they have, they have valid concerns, and they need to be heard. I mean, it's ridiculous because it sounds like to these people that it's a foregone conclusion that the project, as it is shown and presented right now, is going to be implemented in its full entirety. Mostly, these people are concerned with the reduction of a lane from the four lanes on that highway area. And I, when I read it, I think, yeah, it's a valid concern. I am going to wait. I'm very open-minded. I am going to wait and see what the demonstration produces. I don't want to see traffic pushed into these neighborhoods. I mean, I was just over there the other day. Children are outside, you know, you know, shooting baskets and riding their bikes in the middle of the street. Nobody wants to see their quiet neighborhoods turned into a byway for people bypassing the highway because we've reduced the lanes. I also want to make sure that there's no overages so that we don't have to spend city money when it, the project needs to have more money and we've run out of grant money.
Thank you. Susa, same question. As far as Highway 33 lane reduction project, talk about your views about listening to the community, the impact study that's been performed. What do you, where do you stand on this issue?
Well, first of all, I think many of the people that are against this project don't understand the difference between recreational bicycling or using the bicycle for daily life transportation. It's a fact that people are already running through the arborada, up Puyama, and through these neighborhoods. Okay, the demonstration project will show whether or not that increases. Okay, the goal, see, people are very concerned about the unintended consequences of removing a lane, a car lane, and making a protected bike lane. Now, without going into, this was a mistake that a city manager made about 40 years ago. There's a whole history there that I can't go into. But the fact is that there are unintended consequences for having created a lifestyle where everyone is chauffeuring their children everywhere. Everybody drives everywhere. If we, this is part of a much larger project to connect the entire city, the entire Ojai Valley, to make it truly bicycle-friendly for families and pedestrian-friendly for people with eyesight and hearing and mobility problems. This is part of a much larger project, and it'll-
Thank you, Susa. Thank you. Going to stay with you for the next question, Susa. We're going to begin to just talk about the climate and climate change. And this is not asking whether you believe in it or not. The question is about, what do you think are the three most important mitigation measures that you would promote as a council member to deal with climate change?
Okay, well, the three top issues would be how we handle our energy in buildings. Buildings and transportation are the top producers of pollution greenhouse gases. So we are going to be examining the REACH codes, and there's so much misinformation flying around about REACH codes. We're not going to take away anyone's gas stove, but the aim of the one way that we can start to introduce these codes is to apply them to new development. It's really hard for me to remember the whole question. So, yeah, yes, REACH codes, transportation, and that alternative transportation is, you know, getting removed, getting rid of our car-centric lifestyle. And that's, everything is connected. In order to do that, we have to have local jobs, low housing for everyone, so there's not so much- So there's not so much commuter traffic. But the third most important point would be regenerative gardening and regenerative agriculture. Or if we have to transition to a system that gets away from depleting the soil and using pesticides. We need, by enriching the soil, we mitigate not only, we mitigate all the issues related to climate change, which is the drought and fire.
Thank you. Jerry, same question. What are your three mitigation measures you think the city could do if you were elected? And if you want to comment about the climate declaration to get rid of gas appliance, gas engines by 2030, feel free.
Thank you. Just, well, I'm not going to follow up on the ATP. I am fairly in agreement with Susa. I am fairly in agreement with her in regard to what we need to do. I believe that the Emergency Climate Committee document that they produced and their suggestions to the city saying that we need to be 100% electric by 2030, if, you know, that's almost, it's 10 years, maybe nine years away. I'm very concerned that we make sure that our reach codes don't go too far and, and cause people not to be able to afford these changes and these retrofits. I understand that the first step should be for new, new building, to make them all 100% electrified. I think that's great. I agree with regenerative agriculture practices in teaching and educating. Mainly, I think we really need to time these reach codes for retrofitting is concerning me because the way it was written was saying that the city should go forward and make everyone 100% electrified, even the existing buildings. I'm very concerned with that. I'm very concerned that it's an open-ended statement and that we need to not put the cart before the horse. Make sure people can afford to do this and make sure that our electric grid is going to.
We'll start with you on the next question. It's public knowledge that the new district voting boundaries may not be ideal for a small town like Ojai. But on the other hand, since District Four will be responsible for your election, what are you doing specifically to win your vote in this particular district? And how will you govern if you are elected for the whole city?
Well, I think what it does do for our, our city is it makes it more personal. It makes our politics more personal. It makes the accessibility better. And I think that there's, it, it's just, it may be a very good thing. You know, we, we do have different needs across our city. And one of the reasons I'm running is because a number of my neighbors and friends that live in my district, in District Four, came forward and said, we don't feel like our voice is being heard. We don't feel like we're being represented. We don't think that our city council member is actually listening to what we think is the right choices to be made for us. So what I'm doing is I'm actually reaching out to people by social media. And you know, as COVID is here, it's, it's not been an easy campaign for me. The typical things that we get to do were not provided to me. This is one of my first public forums that I've been able to have. And typically we're meeting in person. There's in-person forums and debates going on. So I'm reaching out to people by email, by walking around my district and dropping off flyers. I'm calling people. I'm encouraging them to talk to me. I have spoke to many people and they're coming through on my website and through my social media saying I have these concerns and I'm trying to meet them.
Thank you, Jerry. Susan, same question to you. As far as now that you'll be representing District Four and the city has moved to these district boundaries, what are you specifically doing to win the vote? How will you govern if, because you'll be representing the city and also District Four?
Well, first I want to make clear that the city council and all, and the, I need to go back for a minute. At every city meeting, we have three attorneys present. The city manager is an attorney. The city, there's the city attorney and we, for as far back as I can remember, we've always had one member. And now it's Ryan Blatz, who is the city attorney. All of them opposed this ludicrous project. It's, it's ridiculous in a small town. All you have to do is look at the map. You can see how diverse District Four is. It's, it's, it's our, it's the largest district, but it, geographically, of course, with the same number of people. And I want to make a couple of things clear. This was forced on us by the state for, for those who don't know. But the district maps do not change with each election. You know, you're stuck with a very small pool of people that you can vote for in your district to represent you. And nothing is, in reality, nothing is going to change. The issues that come up for consideration before the city council are rarely relevant only to a particular district. We continue not only to represent our District Four, but the entire city. Not only that, we are also advocates for issues valley-wide. These are complete artificial boundaries based on the fact that four of the five.
Have to stop you, Susan. Sorry about that. But Susan, I'm going to start the next question with you. Let's go back to traffic and this time we focused in on a very specific issue last time. But now I want to broaden it to say that traffic is a concern for many in the valley, especially in relation to fires and emergencies. What specific actions, Susan, do you support regarding traffic in Ojai? And one of the specific questions is regarding Creek Road, if you want to address that. What can you do to alleviate traffic and your thoughts on Creek Road, please?
I have worked very hard with the residents on Creek Road to bring up their concerns about the constant, about the use of Creek Road as a bypass out of Ojai. I have advocated for them at the county level. I've gone with them. I, I hope that Jerry Becker, who travels Creek Road, joins this effort because it's not only a wildlife crossing, it's a, it's a region with horse stables. We need to traffic calming on Creek Road. Okay, your other question had to do with, you actually asked two questions if I'm, I'm sorry.
Referring to traffic in the sense of the concerns during emergencies such as fires.
All of the issues, if you're talking about concerns due to the lane reduction, during emergencies, all the lanes will again be available. The way the bike lanes will be constructed, they will not hinder emergency vehicles. And the, and the plan as it currently exists has been approved by every agency and board in Ojai that I'm aware of. It's been, the, the lane reduction was suggested by Caltrans about 10 years ago when I drove all over the valley and we spent many, many hours observing traffic patterns. They did not feel that the highway merited four lanes that did not fit in with the rest of our town, which is two lanes.
Thank you, Susan. Jerry, same question as far as what are some of the policies you think should be put in place to deal with traffic in Ojai, specifically Creek Road? And what type of policies related to emergency services and being able to exit the valley, et cetera?
Okay, well, yes, I have been an advocate for calming traffic on Creek Road, Susan. And I've worked with that. I've talked to people. I'm involved. And I agree Creek Road has become a byway. What I am more concerned with is reducing the lanes over near our hospitals, near our school. And in the, the sense that where is the, where have you been in trying to create an evacuation plan for the valley? We need a planned evacuation plan in place. I can't believe after the Thomas Fire and we all freaked out trying to get out of the valley. We were on our phones trying to get information, you know, finding out that roads were blocked because cars ran out of gas or cars broke down on the highway getting out. We need a planned evacuation plan. And the idea that we would take a lane out and I, I just, I need to have an understanding of why that is better for us. And I think the plan is not what you're saying it is. I believe there are planters there. It allowed for parking of emergency vehicles in the second lane and the third lane. But it, it didn't allow for people to create a four lane in the event of an emergency. So we need to do something. The city needs to take action. You know, we're, we're in fire season and we don't even have a planned evacuation plan.
Thank you. So our candidates, we've actually run out of time. We got to most of these questions, but to the audience, I apologize for not being able to get to all of your questions. Hopefully you've learned more about each candidate. We're going to begin with closing statements. Each candidate, you have a minute and a half. Certainly you can address anything you wish that came up tonight. And we're going to reverse the order. So we're going to start with Jerry Becker. Jerry, when you're ready, you have a minute and a half.
Okay, well, we in District Four residents, we have a unique opportunity to help lead Ojai into the future. And chief among our challenges is the need to support efforts to make the entire Ojai region more self-sustaining, both environmentally and economically. This means that we need to closely monitor and prioritize the city budget and projects. We need to enhance our safety plan for wildfires. We don't have an evacuation plan in place. I can't believe we still don't have one. Support our economy and our local businesses. We need to encourage and invite new businesses that include businesses enhancing our vision of a clean, green energy. Perhaps we need to step up our wifi so people can actually live here and not have to commute and work from home and possibly entice businesses that could use a better service in our valley. We need to find long-term, sustainable solutions to our water issues, building a more energy-efficient infrastructure with the goal of someday running our entire town on clean energy. Raising, and we need to raise our air quality standards. We must also help our local families and businesses face the challenges that have been brought on by the pandemic. And we really need to do a leadership that will put this and our differences aside and do our hard work of rebuilding it together now. I am committed to bring my training skills and knowledge to this spot and I hope that you will help for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And our next candidate, Susan Francina. And we'll get you unmuted there, Susan. And when you're ready, you'll have a minute and a half.
I agree with much of what Jerry stated most recently in her closing statement. But as far as an evacuation plan, it should be pointed out that everyone does not need to converge in front of the high school to evacuate Ojai. Fairview residents can go down Rice. There are many other routes out of Ojai. And no matter how you cut it, you eventually will be on a two-lane road. That's an indisputable fact. Okay, as far, to the best of my knowledge, the plan, the ATP plan will not interfere with emergency vehicles. If there are issues, we have a six-month demonstration plan to address those issues. Okay, it'll, all of the problems that, if there are problems, they will come out during the demonstration plan. But I want to tell, my message to those that are watching and especially to District Four voters is that you have a special responsibility this election. For the first time, you are the one fourth, the only one-fourth of the population can vote for a candidate that in truth represents the whole city. So please investigate the qualifications and backgrounds of each candidate carefully. And above all, please exercise your sacred right to vote. Thank you. Do you want to?
Thank you. And we're going to go ahead and show a quick presentation from the League, reminding voters about their options this year. Plan your vote is what we say. You have three different options to return your mail-in ballots. You can do it through the mail service, drop it off at a secure ballot box location, or you can return it to one of the voting centers that'll be opening up a few days before the election. That is, if you choose to fill out your mail-in ballot, you can always go and vote in a voting center if you wish. Ballots should be in most people's hands by this week. Drop boxes are opening soon. If you do not get a ballot by October 16th, please contact the Elections Division. One of the things we remind you to do at the League of Women Voters is try to make a plan to get that ballot returned into the mail no later than October 20th. That'll ensure that it will be received by the Elections Department by election night. Now, it's important to know though, that as long as a ballot is postmarked by November 3rd, it'll still be counted up to 17 days after if it's delayed in the mail. So don't take a chance. Get them in early and also be patient on election night. It may take a week or even longer to get all of the votes counted throughout the county and the state. There are some great resources for voters. There's whereswideballot.sos.ca.gov where you can enter some information and you can track your ballot as it moves through the mail and to the Elections Department. Votersedge.org is another great resource showing you all the candidates that are running in your particular area along with the ballot propositions. To view tonight's forum, you can visit our website, lvwventuracounty.org and then click on Candidate Forums and much like you did to register for tonight's forum, you can go back and watch the video for this or any other forum, including the three other ones we are hosting tonight. So with that, thank you. Remind you to vote. And if you are doing a mail-in ballot, make sure you sign the outside of the envelope. With that, I'd like to thank our volunteers Cheryl, Maddie, Elizabeth, Betsy, and Pat. And I'm David Barron with the League of Women Voters. Thank you and good night.